And we are live. Video?
My name is Aaron Hobbs and I'm a member of the Coordinating Committee for the Indiana Poor People's Campaign. Tonight, I'd like to share with you a brief history of our work and highlight the demands of the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival. Over the past few years, the Poor People's Campaign has developed a detailed moral agenda based on the fundamental human rights that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. envisioned for the first Poor People's Campaign back in 1968. In 2017, the Souls of Poor Folk Audit was initiated to provide an empirical study of how our path has unfolded over the past 50 years and how our nation trembles today from a lack of moral vision. It summons our highest moral aspirations and diagnoses our deepest national ailments, draws on academic research, and most importantly, the testimonies of human beings battered by harmful public policies. As James Baldwin reminds us, not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced. The audit revealed the necessity for people around the nation to come together to confront the interlocking evils of systemic racism, poverty, ecological devastation, militarism in the war economy, and the distorted moral narrative of religious nationalism. Under the national leadership of Reverend Dr. William Barber and Reverend Dr. Liz Theo Harris, beginning in May 2018, Indiana joined 39 other states and the District of Columbia for the Poor People's Campaign 40 days of action. In Indiana, we held rallies weekly at Monument Circle, the Indiana State House, the Finance Center at Fort Ben, and the Governor's Mansion. We also participated in acts of civil disobedience to draw attention to the demands of the campaign. In July 2018, we followed up this action with a meeting at the State House with Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb and his staff to share the demands specifically related to our state. In June 2019, we joined over 1,000 community leaders in Washington DC for the Poor People's Moral Action Congress, which included a Presidential Candidates Forum, the release of our Poor People's Moral Budget, and a hearing before the House Budget Committee on the issues facing the 140 million poor and low-income people in our nation. The next nine months, we embarked on a 25-state bus tour to mobilize, organize, register, and educate voters. And just a few short weeks ago, the Mass Poor People's Assembly and Moral March on Washington Digital Event was held on June 20, 2020. Today, over 50 years after Reverend Dr. King and the 1968 Poor People's Campaign declared that silence was betrayal, we are coming together to break the silence and tell the truth about the interlocking evils of systemic racism, poverty, ecological devastation, the war economy, and our distorted moral narrative. The truth is that systemic racism allows us to deny the humanity of others, and by denying the humanity of others, we are giving permission to exploit or exclude people economically. This quest for the control of resources leads to the potential destruction of our entire ecosystem and everything living in it. Therefore, we demand that the wealthy corporations pay their fair share of urgent social needs, including decent and affordable housing, quality education and healthcare, safe and affordable water, and investment in job creation. We demand an end to military aggression, a ban of the proliferation of guns in our society, and the demilitarization of our communities both on the border and in the interior. We demand the right to clean water, a healthy environment, and increased public investment in job programs to transition us to a green economy. We demand a clear and just immigration system that strengthens our democracy through the broad participation of everyone in this country. We demand that First Nations, Native Americans, and Alaskan Native people retain their tribal recognitions as nations. We demand equal pay for equal work. We demand fully funded social welfare programs and an end to the attacks on SNAP, CHIP, and HEAT and other vital programs for the poor. We demand the expansion of Medicare in every state and the protection of Medicare and single-payer universal health for all. We demand fully funded public resources and access to mental health professionals and addiction and recovery programs. We demand free tuition at public colleges and universities and an end to the profiteering on student debt. We demand equal treatment and accessible housing, healthcare, public transportation, adequate income, and services for people with disabilities. And we declare that if silence was betrayal in 1968, revival is necessary today. We loudly proclaim that we will move forward together, not one step back. These are our demands.
Good afternoon. I am James Solomon-Ben, the Theo musicologist, or more simply, song leader, with the Indiana Poor People's Campaign. And we are so happy to have you with us this afternoon for our gubernatorial candidates forum. So I'm going to start with an invocation in song, singing a song by Lead Belly, a blues singer from the 1940s. It's called "Meeting at the Building." And in this song, "The Building" is the important meeting place. It could be a church, it could be the county seat, it could be the State House, it could be where you go to vote. So, "The Meeting at the Building..." "Meeting at the building will soon be over, soon be over, soon be over. Meeting at the building will soon be over, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land. Shouting at the building will soon be over, soon be over, soon be over. Shouting at the building will soon be over, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land. Voting at the building will soon be over, soon be over, soon be over. Voting at the building will soon be over, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land, all over this land, my lord, all over this land. We said, "All over this land, my lord, all over this land." Well, "all over this land, my lord, all over this land, all over this land, all over this land."
Thank you for that great invocation, Brother James. We appreciate that. It's nice to see everyone here this evening. And as Aaron mentioned in the video, there are five basic pillars that the Poor People stands upon addressing. Those five pillars are systemic racism, systemic poverty, militarism, and the war complex, environmental devastation, and the distorted moral narrative of religious nationalism. And Kimberly is now going to expound on some of the statistics about the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Jeff, and wanted to make sure that my audio is working? Yes, excellent. We are a nonpartisan organization, an organism, but we are definitely political because we want these elections to impact the people around the state who most need a government that serves all of the people. So this election cycle, we demand that there is secure housing for the poor throughout our state. We are looking to eliminate food insecurity that so vastly impacts children and youth all across this state, in a state known for our fertile farming land. In addition, we recognize that this is a moment in history where law enforcement could build the trust of our people and be changed for the better. Between 2008 and 2014, Indiana law enforcement received 53.7 million in federal military equipment. It implies that to be effective, the police must win an arms race with our criminals. Community-based policing is our preference. It requires citizens to trust rather than fear the police. We want to reduce militarism that creates fear and have our elections result in better social services, increasing community-based policing, hiring police that reflect the racial makeup of the community that they are policing, eliminating bail systems which result in imprisonment before trial for the poor, and better vetting of the political beliefs when hiring police officers to make sure that they will treat all people equally. We want policing that has the trust of the people to protect the people. In addition to care for the poor and fair policing that directly impacts especially persons of color, we want to make sure that we have healthy water and air. The US News ranks us as 49th out of 50th, 50 states in air quality. And we need leadership that will protect Hoosier residents from the hazards of terrible air pollution that can lead to cardiovascular and respiratory ailments and death. US News also ranks Indiana's water quality as one of the poorest in the nation, 34th out of 50 states. We have implicating factors that say that our CAFOs, our livestock operations, and our inadequate treatment of human sewage, including failing septic systems and sewage pipes that go straight into the tile drains, ditches, or streams, are what is impacting that poor score. So it is time that we have healthy lakes, rivers, and streams, and that we also have drinking water that is quality and is affordable. And lastly, on my list, but certainly not comprehensive of all the things we want to see so that all people might thrive in the state of Indiana, we want to revitalize our democracy by making voting convenient and worthwhile for Hoosier citizens to cast their votes. We want more polling places rather than fewer. We want to join the vast majority of states with a no-excuse absentee ballot option. And we want to make sure that voters are not purged unnecessarily from the rolls. Further, we demand logical district lines that are no longer gerrymandered for the benefit of any particular party. These are just some of our election hopes and dreams, and we are eager to hear Dr. Woody Myers and what plans you have in place that could make a difference to the poor people of Indiana. And hand this over to Jason Schenk, who is our moderator for this event.
Thank you, Reverend Kim, and thanks to everyone for being here. My name is Jason Schenk. I'm a Quaker minister in Elkhart, which is on traditional Potawatomi land here in the north part of the state. Together with Reverend Shonda Gladden, I'll be moderating the forum this evening. And I'll just give you a brief overview. As you may have seen, Dr. Myers, Governor Holcomb, and Donald Rainwater were all invited to speak directly to the issues and priorities of poor and low-income constituents and take questions from our Indiana family. Governor Holcomb and Donald Rainwater declined, so we are glad to take this time to hear from Dr. Myers about the questions that impact and shape our lives. Next up, we'll have two minutes from Dr. Myers on opening greetings, and then we'll turn to the questions from folks sharing about their lives, the questions that shape us. And then, Dr. Myers will have three minutes for each question so that we get to hear as many questions as possible from those who could be with us or who sent their questions. So with that, we were glad to have you with us, Dr. Myers, and we'll turn it over to you for two minutes for greetings, and then we'll move to questions.
Thank you very much for this terrific opportunity to be with you this evening. The Poor People's Campaign is doing vitally important work and has done so for quite some time now. And I just know that with your continued efforts and with the help of willing participants from government at all levels, federal, state, and local, then we could, over a period of time, make your work no longer required. That's, I think, a good way to put it, by making sure that all of this nation's incredibly rich resources are distributed in a way that everyone has the opportunity to pursue life, liberty, and happiness. Isn't that what we're supposed to be able to do? There's just a tremendous amount of what I just call unfairness in what's happening in our nation and in our world today. So many places around this planet are so blessed with abundant resources and people that seem to be doing very well, and then there's so many other places where you can just see the devastating effects of poverty and on the lives of people, shortening life and making misery the norm as opposed to the outlier. And that, all of those things are present here in the state of Indiana, my home state. I was born and raised here. I understand the state and its history. And I'm determined, as your next governor, to make a big dent in these problems that were just described. And I look forward to working with each of you to help get that done. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Dr. Myers, for those greetings to us and for your comments and your time. As my co-host shared, we invited all of the gubernatorial candidates in the same amount of time that we invited you. And so we thank you for saying yes to listen to the voices of the impacted people across the state of Indiana. At this time, we have the voice, a question rather, from Alice Weintraut, who is from Westfield, Indiana, who sent a message that unfortunately she could not be present, but as you see her photo on the screen, her question directly is, "If Amy Coney Barrett is confirmed and the court strikes down Roe versus Wade, do you think Indiana should outlaw abortion? Please, if you'll respond to that question, you are live on social media as well as in the room with our other organizers. We'll give you two and a half to three minutes to respond."
No, I can tell you right now, the answer is no. I don't think that we should ban abortion. You know, abortion is a very difficult topic for so, so many people, and it is never anyone's first choice. I just know that there are much better ways for women to manage and for their partners to help manage as well the issues of fertility and reproduction. And that's why we have advice available for places like Planned Parenthood, which should be funded to provide such advice and the services as required. And I believe that we can do a much better job in Indiana of getting out of the way in many respects of women as they consult with their physicians as to what's best for themselves and their health and their bodies. The Indiana General Assembly unfortunately has a history in recent years of trying to place itself between a woman and her doctor and trying to force the doctor to do things that aren't required as a part of the services that she or he provides to their patients. So as governor, I will push in the opposite direction as hard as I possibly can to get the state of Indiana out of the clinic when a woman is consulting her physician and allow the woman and her doctor and her clergy, if that's what she desires, to help her to come to the right conclusion as to what's best for her.
Thank you so much. Jason, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, so introduce our next question is going to come from Ephraim Jenkins from Gary. So if we can turn it over to Ephraim.
James Ben said, "We have people from all over this land." So I appreciate, we're going to be hearing from people all over the state, and I'll turn it over to you for your question. All right, thank you all, Poor People's Campaign of Indiana. Thank you, Dr. Myers, for attending. My question is, like I said, my name is Ephraim Jenkins, and my question is, what is your plan for education in underprivileged cities such as Gary, Indiana?
Well, I've spent many, an evening and day in Northwest Indiana, in particular in Gary in recent months. And I know that that's a topic that is vitally important to the citizens of Gary. In fact, Ephraim, I think about two trips ago or three trips ago, I was at the ceremony that was dedicating a historic marker at one of your most prized former institutions, that's Gary Roosevelt High School. And I enjoyed meeting a lot of the folks that were there. The only problem with that visit was some of the singing voices for the old Gary Roosevelt song were not quite on key, but that was okay. The spirit was certainly there. Gary Roosevelt is a good example because it used to be the pride of the city of Gary, and now it's in a building that can't be occupied by students or teachers any longer because of problems that relate to mold, that were because of the pipes that burst that folks didn't notice in time, and on and on and on. It's just emblematic of what's been allowed to happen in Gary and other communities in the state. Gary has been penalized because of the mistakes of some administrators years ago who did not spend money properly. That's what the allegations are. And now, the public school system is under the leadership of a special master, and it's just a situation that we have to resolve. I know that the citizens of Gary want that, the mayor wants that. We'll have to work together to make sure that that happens. And I promised Mayor Prince that, assuming I am elected governor, that will be a priority for me. It's not just Gary, though, that there are serious issues with public education throughout our state as they relate to teacher salaries, incredible micromanagement by the Indiana General Assembly, trying to tell teachers what they should do every single day and how they should spend their free time and what courses they need to take, and on and on and on and on. It's ridiculous. And we have not prioritized spending in our public schools, you know? In the last cycle, the public school's got a 2.7% raise, whereas the charters and others got 20-something percent, 25%. So that's just not right. It's just not right. And in a Myers administration, we'll change that. If 93% of the kids are going to get their education through public institutions, they're going to get 93 or more percent of the money, 93% or more of the attention, and 93% or more of the love that we have to offer. Because the children are our future, the teachers, although a teacher's job...
Dr. Myers, on that one, but I hear your passion for the children, and we want to make sure we get more questions, but thank you.
Yeah, and thanks so much, Jason, because actually, we have a question coming in from the social media crowd. As we said, we have social media from across the country, as well as the people that you see here in the room. And at this time, I want to share a question from, it looks like, Mark Allen Kite. As, "Indiana's Rights of Farm Act insulates farmers and big ag from liability for actions that are detrimental to the quality of water and air. What are your plans to correct this?" And we'll give you two minutes to answer.
Well, I'm going to have to set my timer because sometimes I get a little long-winded here when I get on a topic that I truly care about. But the question has to do with the farmers and their issues with the environment, I believe, and that what we need to do in the state of Indiana is make sure that we're following the rules of the EPA, excuse me, the new EPA, because I'm sure that President Biden and Vice President Harris are going to appoint new leadership for that organization that has not been allowed to do their job. And what I will do as governor is to make sure that the person that I appoint as leader as the Indiana Department of Environmental Management and the Indiana State Health Commissioner work with the EPA to make sure that we stop polluting our water and stop polluting our air. You know, we're fortunate in Indiana to have a water table. There are a lot of states where water is a fighting word. We've got Lake Michigan, we've got the Ohio River, Wabash River, and we've got underground sources of water, but we keep putting things in that water that people shouldn't consume. And some of the big factory farms are not being careful at all with the excrement that's created on those farms, and therefore, nitrates and coliform bacteria are getting in the water supply, and that has to stop, especially when you have that in low-lying areas that are subject to flooding. And so, in a Myers-Loss administration, we'll pay extra special attention to those issues as well as to the human sewage systems that don't work as well as they might or should have. And we'll make sure that those who pollute our water supply are held responsible for getting it fixed. We'll have to do that in conjunction with the new science that's coming out. Our ability to detect substances in the water is better now than it's ever been. And so, we'll bring science to the Department of Environmental Management and to the state board of health efforts to get this done, and I'll be happy to lead that charge.
Thanks so much, and thanks for monitoring your time. I'm going to toss it over to Jason.
Great, thanks. I'm glad to introduce next my friend Anne Thacker from South Bend, who is going to bring a question from her Welsh experience. So turned over to you, Anne.
Good evening. Thank you to the Poor People's Campaign, and thank you, Dr. Myers, for being here. I'm in my early 60s, and I have worked my entire adult life. While most of those working years were spent teaching in preschool, elementary, and high school classrooms, the last nine years were spent working in nursing homes and in the private homes of folks who were needing home healthcare services. Whether I was caring for children or young adults or the elderly, I found it all to be demanding work, requiring training, and high levels of both skills and commitment. So I'm wondering, what do you think about the fact that those caring for our elderly in nursing homes and in private homes are paid far less per hour than your average factory worker? I'm wondering what you think about them having to work at several facilities or agencies just to make ends meet, all the while receiving few or no benefits? Is this how you would want your grandmother's caregiver to be treated? And if you are elected, how would your administration provide real support for these workers who are often called essential, but frankly, are treated as disposable? Thank you.
Well, Anne, thank you for that question, and I feel your passion for this topic and both in your former profession and in your current profession. Both are essential. With respect to your question regarding home health and the payment to the workers that are involved in that important industry, we could do better in Indiana. In fact, we know that seniors would much prefer to spend as long a period of time in their own homes or apartments as possible and fight very hard to do that. But we don't make it easy for them in Indiana. In fact, it's preferable for some, of course, that they go into long-term care facilities, not because that's the most appropriate setting, as it is for some seniors, but because that's the way that they believe that the business end of this... the, the, the business end of this should be managed. And I just know that, that if we were to put more money and effort into, uh, paying the home healthcare aides what they deserve, uh, then seniors could stay in their ho- homes much longer and be happier much longer. And that's something that you will find, uh, in our, uh, plan for seniors. Uh, if you go to our website behind me, W W W dot Dr. Woody Myers dot com. Uh, uh, there's a fresh, uh, uh, plan for seniors on our website, uh, that we, uh, upgraded either yesterday or today, uh, where we, we talk extensively about exactly, uh, that issue. Uh, and I could guarantee you that in a Myers administration, that's what we'll do. You know, when I was state health commissioner, uh, and, uh,
Uh, we want to give you two minutes for each of the questions. And we have Faye Dansby who is here from Anderson, Indiana. And so if you don't mind, we want to invite Faye to talk, uh, Ms. Anne, are you satisfied with your answer?
Well, I, I gotta tell you, my, my, my stopwatch is a little slower than yours. I thought I had another 20 or 30 seconds for Anne. Uh, but we'll, we'll, we'll go on to, to Faye. Uh, and if we get the chance to come back to Anne, I'll do that.
Thank you, Poor People's Campaign of Indiana and Dr. Myers. Dr. Meyer, what will you do in regards to establishing a living wage for the working Hoosiers?
Well, a living wage is obviously vitally important and we don't have that in Indiana today. We have the federal, uh, uh, minimum wage and whereas other states have taken aggressive steps to move, to move to a, a living wage. We have not been one of them. Um, I know that, uh, that's the desire of so many different people, uh, but we've got to get a consensus to do that, uh, uh, in our legislature. That's not something that a, a governor can simply uh, write an executive order and, and, and sign it and, and have it happen. Um, and, uh, that means that we're going to get, need to get both Republicans, uh, and Democrats, uh, involved in finding a strategy uh, that can pass. And of course I will sign it, uh, as it, after it passes, but, uh, it's going to also need, uh, some input from the business sector. You know, there, there are ways to do it. I believe that, that we can make it work, uh, but it's going to have, uh, we're going to have to cooperate in ways that we haven't as a state, uh, cooperated in the past. And it's something that, uh, is very important to me and we'll work hard to get it done. Um, uh, there are people in our state that are now having to work three jobs, two jobs in order to make ends meet. And COVID-19 has made it so much worse for them because, uh, uh, clearly, uh, the, 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 there have been many that used to get overtime that don't and folks that, uh, they had to take salary cuts, uh. Uh, and, uh, you know, technically, if you've gone from three jobs to two jobs or two jobs to one job, you're still employed. So you don't get counted. And the unemployment statistics that my opponent kind of tries to brag about. Uh, so all of those are very, very much at the top of my, uh, of my thinking. Uh, uh, this is something we can, we can fix. Uh, we just got to bring the right economic stimulus pa- plans to Indiana. The right kind of job trading, make sure that everyone gets the right education. Uh, and, and we can do a lot better, uh, on this issue than we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for that. Uh, for our next question. Um, it, we have Dara Marquez, who is also from the fine city of Elkhart here, um, who's going to, uh, bring the next question.
Great. Um, my good Jason, you can hear me?
Yep.
Great. Uh, hello. Good afternoon. Uh, thanks for joining us, uh, Dr. Woodrow. Um, my question, uh, comes particularly from, uh, experience in organizing with the undocumented community. Um, in particular, the, um, undocumented working class here across Indiana. Um, we have, uh, an estimate of a hundred thousand undocumented immigrants and their families um, that have made their home here in Indiana. Um, in fact, you know, through, through experience, through testimony, um, and through just reporting, there's more than 60% of our families that are undocumented that have made their home here in Indiana for more than 10 years. Um, and a lot, a lot of us, uh, in our families contributing in, in the large industries like agriculture and manufacturing. Um, and you know, just the, the need of, of needing to have access to uh, just living a, a life with dignity, right? Um, a life with dignity can be as simple as driving our children to school or, or, um, you know, going to work, uh, without fearing of being pulled over and uh, being in the detention, um, centers or being, uh, held into the deportation process. Uh, so my question in particular right now is, uh, regarding driver's licenses and the access to those, uh, from the undocumented community. Um, there have been at least the past seven years where there have been bills introduced um, from both the House and the Senate, uh, in being able to provide this access to undocumented immigrants and their families. Um, so my question is, um, as we move forward towards election and then even afterwards, um, if you were to be elected, uh, would you continuously promote and advocate, uh, for these, uh, for this bill type for undocumented immigrants? And then, um, when it comes to your desk, um, will you sign and, and support, uh, one more step for, for the undocumented community?
Dara, the answer to your question is easy. Yes and yes. Uh, and, and if you look at, uh, our Latinx agenda, that's again on our website, uh, that's one of the prominent areas that, that I talk about. Uh, yes, uh, we, we want to make sure that everyone, uh, who is driving Indiana, uh, has, uh, the, uh, the documentation to be able to, to do so, uh, uh, but now that you still have to, you still have to pass the test. Uh, I don't want anybody to think, uh, that you don't have to take the driver's test. You don't have to know the signs and so on, like I had to when I was growing up. But, but yes, I think there ought to be, uh, 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 that all the, the folks that are driving, uh, should have the, the right kind of documentation to drive. And you know what that does too? It also allows, uh, for insurance, uh, to be, uh, uh, to be processed on the vehicles. And we, we of course want to make sure that there aren't, uh, hopefully there are no, uh, motor vehicle incidents, but we know they happen. And, and if there are, we want to make sure that folks are protected, uh, both property and lives and, and medical bills. And so, uh, healthcare, excuse me, uh, uh, insurance, uh, for, uh, for, for your vehicle is vitally important. And, uh, and I think that's a big part of it as well. Uh, so you, you have my undivided, uh, attention and support on that issue.
So thank you, Dr. Myers, so much. Um, and I'm looking for Phil Wright and I don't see him in the room. And so, um, Phil Wright, if you are here, uh, wave and let our tech team see you. But otherwise, we're going to go back to the social media and there are several questions there for you from across the state. Um, I am going to, uh, just pull one that looks like something we haven't heard from. And this is from, um, uh, activist that we know, uh, very well here with the Poor People's Campaign and is Sarah Skipper. Um, who asked, "The cost of a drug treatment for Hoosiers has risen about 58% between 2012 and 2017, while household incomes only rose 10%. Will you support legislation that cuts the cost of prescription drugs and increases minimum wage?" That's from Sarah Skipper online.
Well, I, I'm a little, uh, her, her question was relating to drug treatment and I, I, I had assumed originally that meant for folks that had substance use issues, but I take it she's asking a broader question with her script, with respect to prescription drugs in general. Uh, so because I, Sarah's out in front of me, let me try to answer both. Uh, uh, the, 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 the use of, uh, drug treatment to help people that are involved in substance use has grown in, in both, uh, scientific, uh, uh, stature and in, and in, and popularity among physicians. Uh, we know that for certain types of, of drug problems that, that, uh, there, there are, there are different types of medication that are available that will help, uh, dramatically. When you combine those, especially with behavioral health, uh, uh, resources. And so I'm very much in favor of that. And I think our local health department should be far more involved in, uh, and providing, it's called MAT, Medication Assisted Treatment, uh, for substance use disorder. And, and that's, uh, certainly something that, that I want to see, uh, far more available in Indiana. Now with the bigger question of, of prescription drug uh, cost, uh, you know, that, that, that's a global question, but it's particularly problematic here in the United States and in Indiana. Uh, and until we get federal, uh, the federal government, uh, to really address it once and for all with, uh, hopefully a, a new uh, president and vice president and a democratic senate and a house that they can get together and figure out what we should do nationwide. I'll, I'll work very aggressively with the, the Indiana programs such as, uh, Indiana Medicaid, uh, HIP 2.0 and other programs around the state to make sure that we modernize our drug formulary, that we make sure that all the available drugs are, are on it. Uh, or all the needed drugs are on it. And then I'll work cooperatively with, uh, companies li- like our own Eli Lilly and others who are, who are, are starting to make inroads, especially in, in, in the drug treatment for problems like diabetes that where the, uh, the, the, the expense has gone way up, uh, in, in recent years. They make a couple of really great uh, diabetes drugs and they're trying to put programs together, uh, to decrease the cost for those, for, for patients that need them. And, and I, I'm going to hug on them a little bit to make sure that they continue that. And then, and then encourage them to, to make, uh, even more inroads because there's so many people in our state that have diabetes. And that's just one example. There are other diseases that are very prominent as well that we can work on until the feds, uh, get us a much better approach to the overall problem of prescription drug costs.
Thank you, uh, for, uh, speaking to that. I know this is a, a area of both professional and personal passion of yours. Um, and so our next question is about, uh, builds on that theme of health. It comes from, uh, Eric Kurtz, who sent this, uh, question ahead. He's from Goshen. Um, and he couldn't be with us, but, um, I'll, I'll read it here. He says, "COVID-19 numbers have been rising alarmingly since September. We also know that COVID-19 disproportionately affects working class, poor and poor people and people of color. What can we do right now to stop the rise in cases and protect the most vulnerable? Specifically, when Governor Holcomb announced the back on track reopening plan in May, he said, um, that the state would have to pause or return to an earlier phase if we weren't meeting the principles outlined to keep us safe. Uh, is it time to move Indiana back to an earlier phase?
Uh, I think it's time to move Governor Holcomb to a new job. Uh, that's what I think it's going to take, uh, in order for us to, uh, get this problem, uh, solved, uh, once and for all. Uh, we've got to, uh, understand that this, uh, pandemic is, is here. It's going to be with us, uh, for a lot longer than any of us would like. Uh, and it's going to require us to do things that are, are, that are not popular uh, in order to reduce the likelihood of one human being giving this virus to another human being. You know, the, the, the virus, uh, doesn't care what state you're from, doesn't care what county you're in, doesn't care uh, how old or young you are. It doesn't ask you for ID. It just goes from one person to another opportunistically, usually through the air, occasionally through surfaces. And what we've got to do is, is use what we know about the virus to solve the problem. Uh, and that means washing your hands, social distancing, making sure, uh, that we are staying away from others in congregate settings. Uh, we reduce our oppo- that will reduce the opportunity for the virus to spread. But the most important step that, that, uh, that I will take is I'll put a mask mandate in, uh, for the state of Indiana because in a public health emergency, you have to do things that work. And until unless, uh, we get a safe and effective vaccine, uh, a mask, uh, mandate is, is, uh, is something that I think will, will increase the, uh, the ability of Hoosiers to protect themselves, protect their loved ones, uh, until we get the, uh, the vaccine, uh, distributed equitably throughout the world and, and particularly here in Indiana. Um, those are the things that I think, uh, that the options that we have, and that's the reason that our numbers are going up is they were not doing those things. Uh, we are not doing those things today. Otherwise the numbers would go down. It's very good. It's a, it's a, it's a simple math. If, if people don't spread the virus from one to another, numbers go down. People spread virus from one to another, numbers go up. Uh, the positivity rate is going up. The new case numbers are going up. That's because we do not have effective policies in our state or our nation to protect people from this virus.
Oh, thank you so much, Dr. Myers. Um, and we have about five to 10 minutes left in our conversation with you. Uh, if your colleagues, uh, who are on the ballot had shown up, this would not have been so, uh, intense for you. Uh, but.
I'm, I'm fine. It's not intense. I feel good.
We, we certainly wanted to have other people to ask questions to. Uh, but apparently you are the one who cares about the voices of the poor and dispossessed and a 2.4 million of them here in the state of Indiana alone. So we thank you for being present. Uh, want to take just another question from social media. And then I think, um, my colleague is probably going to have the last word. Um, and that is this question from Aaron Elliott Stennett on social media who says, "What are you going to do about Southeast trans? Many Hoosiers that are on Medicaid cannot get to necessary medical appointments. And this is a problem statewide. Prior to set trans being put in place to the tune of $128 million over four years, Hoosiers on Medicaid could get rides to necessary medical appointments."
Well, let, let me tell, uh, I believe it was Aaron that asked that question is, yes, I'm aware of that problem. I've heard about it now from a number of people. Uh, and, uh, this election has got what, uh, almost three weeks to go. And then the, then the, uh, the, the term of the next governor starts in January. If Southeast Trans is listening, they better have a plan, uh, ready to go that I can believe in on day one, or they won't be around, uh, in the state of Indiana. Uh, and, and the relationship that they're now in very long at all because there, there are just too many people that have talked about, uh, them not following through on getting folks to their appointments on time, uh, of getting even showing up, uh, on some locations. Uh, this is a solvable problem, folks. Picking people up, taking them where they need to go and bringing them back is a solvable problem. And if we don't have the right company in place to do that, then we need to figure out a different approach, don't we? Uh, and it's my understanding that, uh, this particular company may have had similar issues elsewhere. Uh, why they were picked, I don't know. I don't know the history of all, all of that, but I can guarantee you that it will get my attention. Uh, and so either we, we, we have a plan that makes it work and makes it work right and that the, that the, uh, contract is being followed appropriately and that people are not complaining because things are working well. Uh, or there will be an alternative. Uh, and I do not hesitate in saying that, uh, that, that, that alternative, uh, will work.
Thank you, Dr. Myers. And, uh, speaking of things that work, um, we have another question here, uh, from Facebook Live. Um, from Luluhawks who asks, "With necessary revitalized efforts by Black Lives Matter and other activists around racial justice, asking for police reform, what short and long-term goals do you have to address these concerns?"
On our website, we have a full criminal justice reform plan, uh, that will eat up all of the, the remaining time. If I went through every detail in it, uh, and we could actually spend another 40, 50 minutes on it, but the essential elements are as follows. We have to eliminate chokeholds and other uh, holds that, that inhibit blood flow to the brain or, uh, harm the trachea. Remember, these are folks that often haven't even been arrested, let alone tried, let alone convicted, let alone sentenced. Uh, so we have to change our, our practices. We have to make sure that our law enforcement officers get implicit bias training. Uh, that's vitally important. It's shown to be very he- helpful. Uh, in addition to that, when some, uh, an officer's accused, uh, of, of an offense or a, a policy violation, we have to make sure that there's the appropriate external oversight to give the public confidence uh, that the process is fair and is, is being of, 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 of managed appropriately, both fair to the officer and fair to the individual, other individuals involved. You know, the vast majority of officers want to do the right thing, but there's a significant small percentage uh, that just don't. They need to leave the, 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 the law enforcement, uh, uh, profession and do other things. And, uh, and they shouldn't be allowed to go from department to department. So we'll make sure that there's a, an appropriate way to, for Indianapolis or Indiana, uh, based, uh, law enforcement needs to know, uh, when, when there's someone who shouldn't have been on the list, appears on it from a place, uh, that they, they didn't do well. Uh, and then, and then finally, I think it's time for us to change some of our laws. I would want uh, to decriminalize simple possession for cannabis in Indiana, legalize marijuana for medical purposes. The meta- the data, the scientific data is convinced me now that for certain disorders such as adirexia, uh, uh, that's secondary to, to patients that have, uh, cancer and/or HIV/AIDS and complex seizure disorders, that the cannabinoids, which include THC and CBD can be very useful. And I want our physicians to be able to prescribe them.
Well, uh, thank you so much, Dr. Myers. Uh, we have, uh, several people here, uh, in the Zoom room with us. And we have reached the end of our pre-submitted questions with the exception of, uh, Jane Salmon Ben. And so, um, wait, I'm getting a message right now. So I'm going to toss it over, uh, to Jane Salmon Ben to ask his question. And then I'll give some, uh, opportunity for closing remarks.
Only if I get to ask him a question.
Uh-oh.
Uh, and that is, wh- what was the date of that Lead Belly song that you, that you sang, uh, early on? I, I, the, the wording is just so prescient and I just, I, and I, Lead Belly was a tremendous blues artist. So if you know the date offhand, I'd love to know it because I'd like to s- see what was going on at the time he wrote that.
Uh, I don't know the exact date. I, I do know it was from the 1940s, uh, when, uh, Alan Lomax was going across. Uh, when uh Alan Lomax was going across the country and recording uh blues artists and um, you know, indigenous music to the, in the southern United States. And then also uh Odetta re-recorded the song in the nineteen sixties. So uh, so yeah, it's a very prescient song. And sure, you can change some of the lyrics to, to meet any sort of uh issue or occasion. But my question to you, um, and I think you already answered this, it's about the uh wealth gap that we have here in Indiana and in the United States. And you know, uh, about the fight for fifteen, uh, the fifteen dollar uh minimum wage. And as you talked about before, people working two and three jobs and still not being able to uh support their families. So how would you go about um making uh wages more fair? And added to that, uh, of course, the planks of education and affordable clean housing?
What we need is generational wealth, uh, and that's what, what I think is missing, uh specifically in the uh, in the African-American community, and let, some Latinx community uh as, as well. And that means that uh, we've got to find ways uh to stop having to live paycheck to paycheck. Uh, it's good if you have a paycheck. It's much better to have one than not have one. But the next step is then finding ways to accumulate uh assets uh so that you can invest and, and have your money work for you or with you, and then make sure that there's some, that there are funds to pass on to your children uh so that they can get the education that they can need, that they need, and they can get a start in life that makes it less hard for them, as it might have been for you or me. Uh, that's what we want to develop, and I think that uh we have to foster entrepreneurism in the in the community, uh, and I will make that easier. Uh, in a Myers-Lawson administration, we'll uh create small business navigators, we'll have programs uh so that uh we will assist folks in finding the dollars that they need to get their businesses started. We'll make it easier to get through the state regulation and red tape to get your business going. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I think it's going to be vitally uh vitally important uh that we uh, we'll make sure that the contracts that the state of Indiana offers to provide so many services from building bridges uh to providing food and in the, in the, 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 uh, many different locations, congregant settings like uh prisons and jails uh and that, and that certain schools, uh, all of that uh should be fair and that the M B E minority business enterprise goals should be met. Um, and if they're not being met, then we need to know why. Uh, we need to applaud the folks that are meeting them and congratulate them, give them public honors, and the folks that aren't meeting them, we need to ask them why not? Uh, and uh, what we could do to stimulate their interest in making sure that these goals are met, and if they can't figure out a way to do that, maybe we should move on. Uh, those are the kinds of things that I'll do differently than the, than the, my opponent. Uh, and I look forward to doing differently, because that's what it's going to take to begin this process of building generational wealth in Indiana. You know, about ten percent of Hoosiers are African-American, uh, but we don't have uh a proportionate amount of the, the wealth that's available in this society, and that, and that needs to change.
Dr. Myers, uh, want to thank you again so much for taking the time to be present with us tonight. Um, on behalf of Bishop William Barber, uh Reverend Dr. Liz Theo Harris, the national co-chairs of the Poor People's Campaign and National Call for Moral Revival, along with my tri-chairs here in Indiana, uh Jeff Howell, James Solomon Ben, and I, and the Reverend Shaman Nicole Gladham. Tonight, we have tried to lift before you um the voices of some of the two point three, two point four million residents in Indiana who are living in poverty or are low income. Uh, fifty-two percent of them being children, one point four million of them being women, and uh sixty-four percent of them being black people like myself. Uh, we've tried to lift before you the ills of systemic racism, militarism, and the war economy, the challenges with law enforcement, uh ecological devastation across the state, as well as needs and issues around family, community, and education. Primarily because we believe that everybody's got a right to live and that somebody's been hurting our people, and it's gone on for far too long. And so the next governor of the state of Indiana needs to be able to address each and every one of these systemic maladies that are interlocking injustices that, when responded to, we believe will shift the, the fabric of our democracy, but especially shift the things that are happening here in the state of Indiana. Since the richest one percent of Indiana residents are expected to receive twenty-six percent of the tax law benefits coming out and coming to the state, Indiana's richest one percent can expect an average tax cut of forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars this year, while the poorest twenty percent in the state can receive a tax cut of just seventy dollars. As revealed in the Poor People's Moral Budget, everybody has a right to live. And we believe that it is possible to invest society's resources to establish justice, domestic tranquility, security, and general welfare for all. And so your responses to these questions and the many, many questions that the poor people across the state of Indiana have will be on the laps of the next administration here in Indiana. Uh, if it happens to be you, which we know you hope it will be, and um, since you showed up, we believe you care about the voices of the poor people, so we will see what happens. Uh, but if it be you, uh, you have our prayers. Uh, you have my personal prayers. I can't speak for everybody on here, because we're nonpartisan and so am I. But uh, I can pray for anyone, the one that I may vote for or not, I can pray for you. So may you be blessed, uh, may your efforts in listening to the voices of the poor be rewarded. And thank you for recognizing that everybody's got a right to live. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our co-theo musicology chair, Nika, who will uh close us out with our song for the night. And again, we thank you for joining with us from the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival here in the state of Indiana. Thank you and God bless.
May, may I thank you for your prayers, uh, but may I also ask you for your vote? Uh, because uh I'm going to need both uh in order to make this happen.
We have heard you, and thank you so much, Dr. Myers. Nika?
You're welcome.
So I'm going to close this meeting uh with a song that uh, "Somebody's Hurting My Brother." And if I can be helped out, I know that this was a song that was inspired by, I believe, uh, a, a area that was having difficulty with uh problems with coal miners or something of that sort. Um, I think that's accurate. Uh, so I'll go ahead here and uh somebody. Hurting our people and it's gone on far too long. I tell you, it's gone on far too long. I know that it's gone on far too long. Somebody's hurting our people and it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. I'm gonna have to take it up. Somebody's hurting, poisoning our water, and it's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. Yes, it's gone on far too long. Somebody's poisoning our water and it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. And I'll close. Somebody's hurting our country and it's gone on far too long. Oh, it's gone on far too long. I said it's gone on far too long. Oh, somebody's hurting our country and it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore.